Call me in order and call on Counselor Brown. We're just in place for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is saying, "One nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice and law."
Call on Rowan.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Weaver.
Here.
Counselor Broughton.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a court to do business.
Approval of the December 16th regular minutes of the regular meeting.
She'll call them.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Brown, second by Counselor Barton to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th. Are there any changes to be made? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. I see a few people I don't normally see here and I'm glad y'all were able to attend today. Next item is a call on Counselor Brown for the invocation.
Invocation will be given by Reverend Horstoff. He's at the St. Stevens Episcopal Church, which I attend, and he has agreed to give us our one invocation for this quarter. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all the blessings you give us. We know that all authority in heaven and earth comes from you. We pray that your wisdom and your spirit would guide all those who are on the council, that they might do that which is to the benefit of the city and all of its citizens. In all that they do, we ask that it would be well pleasing in your sight and that it might glorify you, for we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Next item is a public hearing, so I call the public hearing to order and asks is to consider the rezoning of 1209 Douglas Avenue from R1 to B1. Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this change? Is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this change?
Councilman, I am Alexis Malloy and I own 1209 Douglas. I have made an apartment in the back for my son and I do my business out the front. I am a low-volume business. I am an investment advisor. It has been easy access for the clients. Since I've moved, we opened there on December the first. I've had a lot of positive comments from my clients about the ease of getting in and out on Douglas. I did look at other property but decided when I needed to move from downtown that I would go into a place where I could own it. And that's why I purchased the property and would like your approval for rezoning.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here that would like to speak in favor? Now the public hearing is closed. The next item to approve is zoning amendment for 1209 Douglas Avenue. It's an ordinance, ordinance number 200113.
I have a motion to approve.
Introduce.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to introduce ordinance number 200113.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Brown, second by Counselor Weaver to introduce ordinance number Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the ordinance number 20-0113 is introduced.
I make a motion for immediate consideration of ordinance number 20-0113.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Weaver, second by Counselor Brown for immediate consideration of ordinance number 20-0113. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Mayor Lovelace.
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance number 20-10113 is up for immediate consideration.
I have a motion to approve ordinance number 20-0113.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Watson, second by Counselor Barton to approve ordinance number 20-0113. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the ordinance to, for the zoning amendment for 1209 Douglas Avenue is approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is to approve the accounts payable for December 2019.
May I make the most improved accounts payable for December 2019?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, second by Counselor Barton to approve the accounts payable for December 2019. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the accounts payable are approved.
The next item is, well, let me back up a little bit and talk about the next item. When we purchased the Ritz building downtown owned by Candy McMillan and the estate of Robert C. McMillan, Candy donated her house and property at 1600 Bellevue Avenue and that has since been deeded to the city. There are some miscellaneous contents that'll probably be left in the house also, which is what this ordinance is about. But I want to read a letter first that Candy wrote to the, and I'll just read it verbatim. Dear Mayor and Council, it is my desire to donate the house and lot located at 1600 Bellevue Avenue to the City of Bruton. The intent of my donation is that the property be used however best serves the citizens of Bruton. This would include demolition of the residence. I sign, Candy McMillan. So this ordinance number 20-0113-2 is to declare that real and personal property as surplus
Motion to approve ordinance number 20-0113-2. I'm sorry, we're back to introducing. Introduce ordinance 20-0113-2.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Brown, second by Counselor Broughton to introduce ordinance number 20-0113-2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance number 20-0113-2 is introduced.
I'd like for immediate consideration ordinance number 20-0113-2.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Brown, second by Counselor Weaver for immediate consideration of ordinance number 20-0113-2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and.
Mayor Lovelace.
Yes.
And Mayor Lovelace. Yes. Ordinance number 20-0113, motion carries and the ordinance number 20-0113-2 is immediately considered.
I approve.
I make a motion to approve. Excuse me, I lost my place.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Weaver, second by Counselor Broughton to approve ordinance number Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the ordinance to declare the real and personal property at 1600 Bellevue Avenue is approved.
I'll call on the city clerk with the next item.
The next item is resolution number 20-0113 and this is for approval of a pre-funding agreement with Aldott and FFA, primarily FAA at the airport, for a PAPIS runway flight inspection. Y'all don't ask me what that acronym stands for, but what it is, is a system whereby, it's a visual system, when pilots are coming in who don't have all the, you know, all the computerized screening and all in their aircraft, they come in and they can actually look, especially at night, at a light system that tells them they're too low, they're too high, you know, whatever, it corrects them on landing in the airport. So it's a, it's a safety mechanism or system. And the FAA does the inspections on it or either has somebody do the inspections and they certify the safety of this system. So in order to have this type of system, FAA requires that you have a sponsor. So the airport or the City of Bruton would be the sponsor in this, or Municipal Airport would be. And in order for them to do the inspection, they require that the sponsor pay for the inspection upfront. They'll turn around and reimburse it, but they require the sponsor to pay it. So this is to approve an agreement with FAA to prepay for that inspection before they will do the inspection and reimburse us for it.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve resolution number 20-000113.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Watson, second by Counselor Barton to approve resolution number 20-0113. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to approve the pre-funding agreement with FAA is approved.
Next item is I'll call on Russell Holland with Southern Engineering to discuss the bid award of the paving services agreement, Bullard Excavation, Excavating Inc., resolution number 20-0113-1.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank y'all for having me. We recently opened bids on a paving improvement project located at Lyles Boulevard and Dacus Street. It would carry you from Sowell Road down Lyles Boulevard to Dacus and then from Dacus over to Martin Luther King. The project consists of milling and overlay. We would take about an inch and a half of material off of those two streets, repair some bad places in the asphalt in the base, and then overlay that street with an inch and a half of asphalt. Also includes some miscellaneous things such as manhole adjustments and that sort of thing. We received six bids on this project ranging from $170,000 all the way up to $236,000. We've been through the bids and we'd like to make a recommendation that the city award this project to Bullard Excavation in the amount of $170,569.
And that is resolution number 20-0113-1.
May I make the most improved resolution number 20-0113-1?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Broughton, second by Counselor Watson to approve resolution number Is there any discussion?
Russell, what kind of completion time per road would it be?
Well, talking.
On a good day. How long until you do both roads? On a good day?
On a good day to do both roads, it'll take them about two days to do the overlay work, probably take them two days to do the milling. So you're looking at about a week of total work, but then they'll have to do the manhole adjustments and all, which would probably take another week.
Okay, three weeks?
Three weeks total if we have good weather. And talking to the contractor, he's, he's in a position where he can start this project immediately.
He's ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, it's supposed to rain for two weeks.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to award the paving bid to Bullard Excavating is approved.
I would like to point out when we get to the next item, this is a city-funded project and I think you can see the time difference when the city paved streets versus when the Aldott, like on Sowell Road, how much longer Aldott takes to do work, which we have no control over. The same on Highway 31 that we posted recently. Their response to our latest inquiry in June is when they're hoping to award the project now.
Yes, sir, you're correct. We actually started advertising this at the end of December and there's a strong possibility that we'll be complete with this by the end of January.
All right. While we were working on this, the street, Jenkins Street, which goes behind, connects into Lyles Boulevard and complete that area, it goes behind the Fisher Center, we got with the contractor and Bullard said he would use the same unit price to do that and that is not to exceed $35,000.
That's correct.
So if we want to go ahead and do, while we have the equipment there and we can continue and finish, that's resolution number 20-0113-2.
Motion to approve resolution number 20-0113-2.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Barton, second by Counselor Broughton to approve resolution number Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the Jenkins Street repaving by Bullard Excavating is approved.
Thank you, Russell. Next item is a 94.01 economic development grant agreement with William Jernigan. This is, we held public hearings back in spring on this and it's been an ongoing discussion and this is for up to $60,000. This will be where the former Willie's place was. This will be an upper-scale, nice state-type restaurant. And that's resolution number 20-0113-3.
Kind of caught me off guard with this one. Is this the one right downtown?
Mm-hmm. Where is? Across the bank of Brooklyn.
We're.
He's registered.
He's put a hundred thousand in. He's put a hundred thousand in.
He's only, yeah, he's only put almost $200,000 on himself.
He's sixty-five.
He's going to pay a sixty-five. I make a motion to approve resolution number 20-0113-3.
I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Weaver, second by Counselor Brown to approve resolution number Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Weaver.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution to approve the 94.01 grant, economic development grant for William Jernigan is approved.
There is in the agreement with him, there'll be, after one year, there will be a payback clause and he will start to pay this back over the next seven years. So it's not just a grant that we don't get back, we'd like to receive the money back. We have a member of the water board whose term is expiring and so I appoint Counselor Weaver and Counselor Barton to come up with somebody.
Who's retiring? Who's coming off?
It's.
Lynn.
Yeah.
Richard Lynn.
The public library also has a person whose term is expiring and I appoint Counselor Brown and Counselor Broughton.
Who is that that's coming off?
It's actually two on that. It's Karen Witt and Adam Powell. Adam Powell's term is not expired, but I think there probably needs to be some discussion about whether he is in town or able to do it anymore.
Okay.
Who was the second person again?
Adam Powell.
I got Powell.
Karen Witt.
Karen Witt, yeah.
There is another term up that's a mayoral appointment for the housing authority, that's Robert Hardy, and I'm going to touch base with Mr. Hardy and see what his wishes are.
Man, that's not a.
No, we looked it up. I know what you're thinking.
We were wrong. We pointed.
We were wrong in the past.
Twenty years later, we start to come up.
I know. Yeah. I'm serious. I'm serious.
So all the public, all the public makes so far the council made enough good then?
Huh?
There not enough good then, huh?
Well, I mean, you know, it's gone by the wayside, you know? It's some.
Grandfather, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I thought grandfather stuff then. I'm sorry.
Well, since the mayor has authority to vote, then the mayor appointed.
Yes, sir. Gotcha.
Final item is a council authority to appoint certain municipal officers, ordinance And this would give the, take the appointing authority from the mayor and give it directly to the council, which would override the previous resolution where a board would be appointed, including the city attorney, and present three nominees to the, to the council to vote.
Yeah, that wasn't the one that we discussed last time.
That was a resolution, this is the ordinance that you did.
No, it's not, Mayor.
Well, we checked it twice, but here it is.
The word you used was not, counsel, all I'm saying on this ordinance is that every four years, we're not trying to take the duty with the mayor, the police chief.
I'm sorry, what name?
We're not trying to take away the duties of the police chief at all.
No, it's a pointing.
Mayor, you already made, you already made.
You're out of order. You're not in a discussion right now. Hang on. We're not in a discussion right now. So it's ordinance number 20-0113-1.
I'd like to meet consideration of ordinance number.
Yes, Willie, need to introduce.
Introduce.
Motion introduce. Need to introduce ordinance, uh, ordinance number 20-0113-1. Need to introduce it. Second.
Yes. Motion by Counselor Watson, second by Counselor Broughton to introduce ordinance number 20-0113-1. Is there any discussion?
That's not the order we discussed last council. We got it written now, where it's set up in here right now is that you're saying the council is going to do it with your three people that you got appointed.
No, no, no.
You said that, just tell me.
No, what I said was this overrides a previous resolution to the council.
The previous resolution we did was hire the fire and the chief. That's the previous, it was. You said you'll get three people and two people from us and we will hire, they'll want to do a search committee and then bring it back to the council and the council will vote upon it. That's what we said. The ordinance I'm talking about is every four years, the council, regardless of who they are, will vote on who going to be the chief, whether he stay or not. You back the fire chief, just like everybody else is.
Let me, let me read the previous resolutions you're discussing. That's resolution number 18-0625-1. Whereas the mayor of the City of Bruton has the authority to appoint a chief of police and whereas the current mayor, in consultation with the city council of the City of Bruton, has decided that the following method will be followed if the current chief of police should resign or become unable to carry out his duties as determined by the current mayor. The mayor will appoint a committee consisting of two members of the city council, two registered Bruton municipal voters, and the city of Bruton's attorney. The committee will advertise the position for no less than 45 days. The committee will interview and cause a caliper personality test to be administered to at least three candidates. The committee will present three candidates to the Bruton City Council for interviews by the city council. The Bruton City Council will vote to approve one of the three interviewed candidates at an open, regularly scheduled and specifically called meeting of the Bruton City Council. And that therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Bruton, so forth and so on. So that was word for word what this will override.
Right. But we, Mayor, once again, we're not trying to override nothing already established. All they're saying is the four years.
Okay, well, let me do this, Joe, rather than me trying to say it, I'll ask, I'll ask Ed, will this ordinance override that resolution?
If I understand the question, you like the procedure that was in the prior resolution?
Ed, before you say anything else, Mayor, you read, the first paragraph of your ordinance in your resolution was saying if the chief was to resign, quit, or be terminated. You said if he did it, we're not, I'm not asking him to do anything. I'm saying the four years, the council and the mayor, not, we have a six of. We do a hiring and firing of the chief of that. That's what the, that's what the resolution is about.
I don't know what you're saying to me, but I'm reading this, I'm reading that ordinance and I'm reading this resolution.
I'm.
I'm just taking the English language.
All the, that will override the resolution because that's not to say that you can't pass this ordinance and then re-engraft or re-pass that resolution. It's the absolute clear about the appointment procedure.
That's the only message, the appointment procedure, that's all I'm asking.
Is there Alabama code on this procedure? What's that? Alabama code. What about? Is there Alabama code on this procedure here in this ordinance?
There's not a procedure.
No, there's not a procedure now. There is a procedure to terminate or suspend a police officer that would be above and beyond that.
Yes.
That, I mean, this ordinance might give more protection, which would be fine, but police officers are governed by a totally different statute. But this is adopted on the Alabama code here. Based on the interpretation of recent Alabama cases that's come out of Supreme Court, as y'all well know, the legislature grants, the municipality, the council, all this starts in a pilot, no more, no less. And there's a recent case that came out, well, it's in a statute that says a municipal council can provide for a police chief or fire chief. And there was a recent case, although particularly, that says that that would give them to provide things they can appoint. So, but going back to your original question, if there's any question about you want to grant some sort of zoning procedure about how you vet these people, you can certainly do that with the ultimate authority being with the council, which I think is.
But stop in the city attorney a moment. That's not what this ordinance does. What this ordinance does, okay, what this ordinance does, so we're all clear, it takes, it does away with this resolution, it gives the authorities that the term of the police chief, it gives the council the authority to fire the police chief and the fire chief, and it lays out some items on what, on what things they can fire, how they can fire them and what cause means.
Mayor, once again, that's not the ordinance that I presented to the council.
Okay, well, if you've got one with you, I'll, we can read it word for word and see if it's different. We checked it twice today.
This is the one that Chris.
No, it's not.
No. This is the one that I had printed.
I didn't know it was there. I wish somebody brought the copy. This is not the copy that I presented to the council or you. It's not about taking away the power of the mayor, how to handle the chief or nothing like that. Always saying that four years, the council will appoint the chief or not appoint the chief. That's all it was.
This is what I was giving, Joe, I'll show you.
I understand, I understand that's what you were giving.
This is what you gave me. It's this. And then Christie, at Ed's office, sent me this also.
The ordinance Ed often sent you. All right, discussion's over with, Mayor. Thank you for your time. So I guess, vote on the motion, I guess.
Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Weaver?
No.
Counselor Broad?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Mayor Lovelace?
No.
We, he don't vote on this part. He voted on the second part.
I can vote anytime.
Come on, man, come on. Okay.
No.
Oh, so that's why you changed your agenda, right? Now, I'm going to tell you a little standard before I leave here. I'm going to give it to you, what you sent me on email, how you got involved and changed it down, I knew you were going to vote like that, that the house didn't begin back.
Well, if I'd known how you would have voted, it made a difference, too.
You see what I'm saying, man? Just know that.
Ain't nothing else to mean to John.